Welcome, everyone, to the June 9 City Council Work Session. Welcome, everyone, here and at home. The first thing up this evening is an executive session. Eugene City Council will now meet in an executive session held pursuant to ORS 192.6602E to discuss a negotiation of real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room. All right.
To do is briefly go over the proposed terms for the purchase and sale agreement for Civic. The purchase price would be the 4.5 million that you originally offered. You would have until February 16, 2015, to make your final decision as to whether you want to move forward with the purchase or not. If you decide you would move forward with the purchase, we would try to close on the transaction within a couple of weeks by March 1, or as close to that date as practicable. Two other provisions in the purchase and sale agreement. One is, best way to describe it, is profit sharing. If the city sells or resells Civic Stadium after we acquire it, and we do that within 10 years, then, and we sell for a profit, 4J would be entitled to a share of that. Profit is specifically defined in the purchase and sale agreement. Basically, it would be the difference between what we sell it for and what we spent to acquire it, the 4.5 million, and any additional money we put into it that actually increased the fair market value of the property. If there is profit under that definition, during the first four years, 4J would get 90 percent of the profit; during years five and six, 75 percent; and years seven through 10, they would get 50 percent. You would have the choices to how much money you actually put in. And again, this only applies in the event that you decide to resell Civic at some point during the 10 years. There would also be a deed restriction. The deed restriction would prohibit any use other than the uses that the city would actually make of the property. And that would be to be used as a special-use facility, sports and recreation complex, or open space. We would be able to rent or lease the stadium for practices, for games, for community events, special events. So this deed restriction would allow us to use Civic Stadium for all of the ways in which our Parks folks believe we would actually use it. But any other use that the city might want to make of it, for example, housing, we wouldn't be able to do.
Any questions?
I was just going to get in the queue after we get the motion.
Okay, I will put the motion out, but just as a point of clarification. Most people would interpret something called a purchase and sale agreement as a commitment to buy. Could you clarify if this is committing us to the purchase of Civic Stadium?
No. All this does is it enables the council to decide by February 16 whether you want to move forward or not. In the event that you choose to move forward, then this identifies the conditions under which the sale goes through. But this in no way requires the council to purchase. If you decide not to purchase, or if you make no decision whatsoever, then the city is not required to do anything and won't be expending or isn't obligated to expend any funds between now and then towards Civic Stadium.
Good. I just wanted to make sure we were absolutely clear on that. Therefore, I will move to authorize the city manager to enter into the purchase and sale agreement with 4J related to Civic Stadium.
Second. We moved in second. Mike, and then George.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be voting against this, one, because of my concern of what may come to be a city cost at some point in this, that we could not recoup. I know that is a small possibility, but it's still a possibility nonetheless, and that concerns me. But also, number two, I can't in good conscience continue on with the idea that even though this is a well-negotiated agreement, we're saying in some way that it is all right to use bond money to purchase this asset, because I believe that it's irresponsible of us to use park bond money in order to buy Civic Stadium.
George?
I just have a question about the deed restriction. If, for some reason, the city ends up buying that property, does that deed restriction go with us, or once we own it, can we change the deed restrictions?
No, we cannot change it. So if we turn around and sell the property to somebody else, they're subject to this deed restriction unless they then go to 4J, and the 4J board can change the deed restriction, but we cannot.
Good. All right. Thank you.
I've got Chris, and then George Brown.
I just wanted to quickly clarify. I will vote yes for this, but in no way is it indication that I am in support of the purchase of Civic Stadium. I still am firmly opposed to the purchase of Civic Stadium, and I'm only agreeing to this, too, as a matter of procedure, to keep things moving so you'll have something in place. But I am still opposed to the purchase of Civic Stadium.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, yes, I will support this. I think it's totally appropriate use of the money, and we'll be really happy when we do this and renovate that property. I do have a... Could you tell me why housing was put into the... I mean, why... I'm assuming it was the 4J board that was opposed to having any housing component on the property?
Sorry, I shouldn't have used any example. What the deed restriction says is how we can use the property. And we can use it for basically what parks and recreation facilities are used for. All I was trying to do is say, so, for example, we couldn't use it for housing, for commercial, for industrial, for adult bookstores, for everything else. So housing isn't specifically mentioned.
Okay. Well, the reason I say that is because I... You know, that north lot has got all kinds of potential, rather than just a parking lot for a rehabilitated facility. It could. I think that would be a really good spot for some affordable housing. I've heard people express interest in building a boutique hotel there, perhaps. There are no hotels or motels in South Eugene at all. That might possibly be a compatible use next to a sports facility. So, but I guess, are you saying that they're not necessarily excluded?
They would not be allowed under the deed restriction as it's currently written, but if the plan that the council ultimately approves, if you say, "We're going to buy Civic," and you approve some plan, and it has, for example, retail or hotel, there's nothing that would preclude us from going back to 4J and saying, "Would you modify the deed restriction?"
Okay, thanks. And then, just real briefly, I kind of started this in the executive session. I just wish you guys could have been at the 4J meeting when they approved the city's bid. Each of the board members gave a very detailed analysis of all three proposals, and only one person voted against the motion to sell it to the city. And every single board member soundly rejected, using very detailed reasoning, soundly rejected the YMCA/housing proposal, and soundly rejected the Peter Powell/Fred Meyer/Kroger proposal, and strongly endorsed the city's bid. So they clearly want to sell it to us. They do not want to sell it to anybody else. They want the city to take it over and have it be used for public purposes in the future. So I just wish that you guys could have been there to listen to those comments. They were very illuminating. Thank you.
Chris, you need a clarification?
Yeah, I just need a clarification about the bond measure proceeds. So is it legal to use park bond money to purchase property that could then be used for housing or a hotel?
No. If we purchase the property with bond money, and then it turns out we're using it, or somebody's using it for housing, retail, then the city would need to pay the park bond fund back the equivalent amount. So if we spent 4.5 million for the entire site, and let's say we used half of it, or wanted to use half of it for housing, then the city would need to pay the park bond fund back 2.25 million.
So we would need to find a source for 2.25 million dollars to reimburse the park fund?
Right. If we're using park bond money, we have to use the facility for park bond purposes, or we have to pay the park bond fund back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. Claire?
Aye.
Six in opposition. Two, it passes. Thank you. So now we're going to go on to the next item, and that is the Work Session on Prohibited Acts in Downtown Activities Zone. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah's going to start us off with a presentation.
Lieutenant Klinko and I are going to share this microphone. On Tuesday, May 27, you had a public hearing on two changes recommended for the downtown core: a shift in hours for the plaza at Broadway and Willamette, and a dog licensing requirement. I'm here tonight with Lieutenant Klinko to discuss the background for these recommendations and to answer specific questions. It's hard to believe, but it was only in 2010 that we completed the work on Eugene Counts to develop and adopt the outcomes the community most wanted to see progress on. I'm sure, for those of you that were here, you remember the specific details of this slide, but if not, it was one of the ways we captured the themes of the many community conversations we heard. As you can see from the last slide, and the word cloud developed from the comments received, improving downtown was a significant and recurring theme in the community. Based on that feedback, you developed some specific outcomes related to your goals. Under "safe community..." I'm not going to read all of them, I'm just going to pick a couple of them out. "Under safe community, you asked for a greater sense of safety, especially in the downtown. You asked for visible and accessible police presence. And under 'sustainable development,' increase downtown development and support for small and local business. And you wanted to ensure that culture and recreation was accessible to all incomes, that we preserved our strength in arts in the outdoors, and that we continued to invest in arts and culture as an economic engine." At the time these outcomes were developed, we still had several pits downtown, and were in the early parts of what is now called the Great Recession. Many doubted Eugene's ability to turn downtown around, especially given the national fiscal crisis. Instead of focusing on what we couldn't do, the city organization embraced the goals and outcomes and made some subtle, yet significant shifts in how we plan, coordinate, and lead the work of our organization. For example, we developed a downtown policy team that includes the executive directors of Library Recreation and Cultural Services, Central Services, Eugene Police, and Planning and Development. This team meets monthly and works to consistently balance our downtown strategies to meet your goals. At least three times a year, in addition, this leadership team pulls together a broader city staff team that are all working on downtown. We meet once before kind of the special event season to coordinate our activities and communicate what's happening. We meet one time during the season to check in on how things are going and see if there's things we can improve. And we meet once after the season to see how it went and to start our planning for the next year. These efforts and initiatives have been enormously successful over the last several years. More than 240 million has been invested in new buildings and redevelopment, bringing in new businesses, restaurants, and entertainment venues. There have also been more than 600 housing units added, bringing hundreds of new residents to the core of our city. And as you know, a downtown public safety station has opened, which includes nine police officers, a sergeant, plus a station manager who focuses their efforts on keeping our downtown safe. Along with these important investments, there have been a number of smaller changes, such as lighting enhancements, poetry in our parking garages, plaza seating, planters and bike racks, that have also contributed to steadily changing the perception of Eugene's downtown. And even making that list, I'm sure there's a number of others that you can think of that I just haven't added today. I share this history and context because it is the work of this cross-departmental group that drives the progress and recommendations for downtown. At any given time, an item may come forward that seems very specific to development, public safety, or arts and culture, but is the balance of investments we have made across disciplines and departments that has helped to create the conditions for growth and vibrancy in the downtown. There are two specific items to discuss today. The first is related to dogs in the downtown. One of the ways you can measure success, especially in people living and frequenting downtown, is the number of dogs you see in the core. It is more common than ever to see dogs downtown, and their presence has been mostly a positive addition to the downtown experience. There are also some challenges that come from more people and dogs that can be solved a number of ways. The licensing requirement was the policy team's recommendation for an approach to keeping both dogs and people safe as we continue to see more of both on our sidewalks. All dogs are welcome with a license, which ensures they have a rabies vaccine and a phone call home should they be lost. The second recommendation is to match the Broadway and Willamette Plaza hours to the downtown park block hours. This would apply an 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. closure consistent with the park blocks and other public gathering spaces. This is an area that the city and Saturday Market have made significant efforts to improve with the installation of food carts, tables, and chairs, but continues to be challenged with unsafe overnight behaviors. This approach allows for special events beyond closing hours, and also allows for people to safely pass through public spaces similar to other parks. And of course, we will continue to invest in positive downtown activities, such as Summer in the City. In fact, I brought schedules today for you to have and expect to see a council dodgeball team in August. We believe these changes will help promote an environment that continues to not only feel, but be safe for downtown visitors, unless, of course, you're on the opposing dodgeball team. In addition to Lieutenant Klinko, the other members of the downtown policy team are here tonight, and we're available to answer questions, provide more information. I know we don't have a lot of time, but we could at least get started on that.
I think it might be most useful, given the amount of time we have, we'd just try to get one round around the table before we have to stop talking. So I'll start with Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. In the downtown city park, do we have existing park rules that deal with dogs in a similar way to how you would like to handle this in the general downtown activities zone area?
Well, there is current city ordinance that requires that a dog be licensed either at the age of six months or when its canine teeth come in. And for that... For someone to have an animal in the park that wouldn't... That isn't licensed would constitute a violation of park rules. So the answer is yes.
Councilor Zelenka brought something up here, and we don't have a lot of time to do this, but he mentioned last time that it seems as though we have some kind of disparate ways we're treating these. And I have to tell you, from my perspective, I agree with him. I'd just as soon make that area a public space similar to all other public spaces and designate it a city park. And so I guess we may have to continue this conversation at a future point, but I'll start the conversation there by saying I move to direct the manager to bring back to council appropriate action steps to designate Keyzee Square as a city park.
I'll second that.
Move to the second.
I'll speak to that if I can. The reason here is that I don't want to have arguments about how we should and shouldn't be treating people one way or another in separate spaces. We already have well-established rules for how we deal with how we all share that public park space, and I think they apply just as well to this space. And I'm just as happy to say, "Let's do this the easy way." Thanks.
Okay, I'm just going to keep on going.
Oh, okay. How did that be me? We've received emails, numerous emails voicing opposition to the fact that if we changed the downtown activity zone to include no dogs, unlicensed dogs, that the dog would be impounded and sent off to wherever they send the dogs to, and the person would be arrested and put in jail. Is that correct?
There are a number of different sanctions that could be brought against someone who violated an amended downtown activity zone. First and foremost, somebody could receive a warning, just like they do now, potentially. Secondly, they could receive a citation for violating the ordinance that does not require that their animal be impounded. There is a provision that would allow for someone to be jailed. My personal perspective is that's not the optimal outcome. Obviously, the optimal outcome is just compliance, but there is that potential in a very... In my estimation, in what would be a very small circumstance.
All right. Well, I... Being a dog owner, I feel that it's important that everybody has their animals licensed. In fact, mine are licensed and have microchips in them. As far as having a restriction on any dogs in the downtown area, I think that's, you know, including licensed dogs, I don't think that's the right way to go. You know, I mean, look at your major cities, New York, Chicago, wherever. They allow dogs downtown because people live downtown. So to me, you know, banning dogs altogether, licensed dogs from the downtown area, would not be something that I'd want to do. But I do feel that it's very important that dogs, if you're going to have them in a populated area, that they, at minimum, be licensed.
Greg?
You know, I think this conversation is a little more complex than just cut and dry whether we, you know, do dogs or don't do dogs, or the licensing of dogs. And the issue, going back to the motion that Mike made around, you know, looking at making this a city park, I would support that motion based on the contingent that we have this conversation, and we, you know, at least vet what those options are, what they look like. I think the problem is, and I've been downtown enough to know, that you have a very small population of dog owners who are not obeying the law and are, you know, are menacing other people who are trying to traverse downtown with dogs. I had that experience myself, most notably with a pit bull. The pit bull owner was screaming at me for some reason, I don't know. But, you know, the vast majority of people who have dogs are responsible people, and responsible people usually take care of their pets. I think there are ways to get to where we want to go in terms of having dogs and dog owners, you know, be able to share the space with everybody else like anybody else does. I just think that we don't need to be overly draconian in terms of the way we approach that. So, you know, I would like to have this conversation, see where it goes, and then we could kind of move forward with something that I think would be most reasonable for people who are, you know, everybody who wants to, you know, engage in space and work through things.
Okay, George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm not going to support the motion. Broadway Plaza, Keyzee Square, it is not a park, it is a public plaza. I'm not going to support the curfew idea. That will solve nothing. It won't help anything. If someone is breaking the law, committing a misdemeanor or a crime, we want our police officers to cite them, and we want them to arrest them if they're posing a public safety problem and are violent, and we want them to take them to jail, offenders to jail. You know, it's... We keep coming back to this. I looked at some archived notes from City Council session in 2004, and we're talking about a curfew. They called it Broadway Plaza back then. Councilor Taylor was the only member here at the table that attended those meetings, and they did away with the chief laner after hearing from a lot of people, including councilors, did away with the curfew idea. They made that was a sensible decision. The problem is, you know, we heard a public testimony from some of the vendors down there that they find urine, feces, needles, trash in the morning. Well, we have nine new police officers downtown. To enforce a curfew, I'm assuming that a police officer will be going through the plaza regularly from 11 to 6. Why aren't they doing that now? To catch some of these people that are violating the law? If people are committing crimes, selling or using illegal drugs, public defecation and urination, and so on down the list, we... They already have the ability to do something about it. There's just... There's no point in imposing a curfew. And dogs... Yes, here's a quote from the ordinance: "Every dog in the city of Eugene in an incorporated lane county must be licensed when they are either six months old or develop their canine teeth." So we already have the ability to cite and do something about somebody that has an unlicensed dog. And to get a license, you have to bring proof of rabies vaccination. So we already have perfectly good laws in place. There's no reason to create this complicated extra layer on top of things that we already have. We just probably need better enforcement. And by the way, downtown in the plaza has a tiny little micro area of a postage stamp. There's unlicensed dogs all over town. It's not just in this one small area of downtown. And yes, I agree with Councilor Pauling, banning dogs from downtown or any portion thereof is a terrible idea because we have people that live down there that have their pets, and they have their guide dogs.
Thank you. Now, Councilor Surratt?
Yes, I really appreciate what Councilor Brown has to say, and I agree with pretty much every point he made. I think we have laws on the books right now for those prohibited activities. I don't see creating another level of bureaucracy as being helpful. I think we'd be better off investing in a Portland Lou and some other seating arrangements to make the area more attractive to everyone. I think more people is the answer, not banning people for certain activities. So I will also not support the motion.
Councilor Taylor?
Thank you. I think this is a terrible idea. Keyzee Square is not a park, it's a public place. It's one of the few public places we have. What we need is seating there, not just the seats brought in by the people who are selling things. We need seating that is available to anybody who wants to sit there, regardless of what time it is. As one email I got said... I understand the donut shop stays open all night. And we got one email saying, "I'd like to have a donut in the middle of the night. Maybe you'd like to go sit over there." Or maybe some people would like to sit there without spending any money. And it's... What we want is more people downtown. We want a vibrant downtown, and something that's a really vibrant downtown is open at all hours to all kinds of people. And I think that's the direction we should go. I would actually like to get rid of the curfew in the parks, but to call this a park, I think is ridiculous. And what we need is... And the people who are complaining, who are selling things there, they have the privilege of being there. I don't know how much they're paying for it, but it is a privilege for them to be on that public spot. I think we need... And I'm really sorry that the seat... One seat that was there was destroyed, that there was one place to sit. We seem to keep taking care of... Taking everything... Any place anyone can rest, we get rid of it. And sometimes people, if they're downtown, enjoying the downtown, they may sometimes want to stop and rest for a while, or talk to somebody, and sit down instead of standing. And maybe they don't want to spend money all the time. But if they... It's just a really bad idea, and I hope we don't pass this. I know we have tried, as George brought up, we have tried before, or some people have tried to get a curfew. tried to get a curfew. And there was once a proposal to get a curfew of all young people, I think, that didn't go anywhere. As for the dogs, there's already a law, and I would like to see us do two things. I'd like to see us pay for rabies shots for anyone who can't afford it, and I would like to see the Portland Lou also. People need a place to go.
Thank you. Curtis?
A question. If we were to designate that area as a park, a pocket park if you will, what does that do to the vendors who are selling food? Can vendors sell food in parks? Does there, is there an impact on their ability to conduct business?
The park rules allow for a park permit to do things like that. There might be a slight modification that you would want to make around a food cart that maybe is an address specifically. It's been a while since I've looked at the park rules, but you would be able to adjust that.
Okay, so they could continue to operate?
Just like they used to be in the park blocks, if you remember years ago before they moved into Keesey. They used to be in the park.
Right, okay, okay. And around the issue of licensed dogs, I think we have laws that say dogs need to be licensed. I think we just need to be very diligent about enforcing. I think dogs should absolutely be licensed. I think every dog should be licensed. And so if there is a dog, whether it's downtown or in some other neighborhood, that is not licensed or can't produce a license, I think we need to act on that. I think we definitely do. The risk of rabies, I think, is as legitimate as anything else, but I think all dogs need to be licensed, whether it's a park or not. We need to, we need to work on that. The notion of designating that as a park does create a certain consistency in terms of how we would deal with that area as opposed to other parks. We know what park rules are, we know how park rules operate. I'm less inclined to think of that as some sort of a free speech square. We have a free speech square. It may not be particularly free right now, but it is a free speech square. And in my opinion, Keesey Square has never worked, whether it was Broadway Square, whatever you want to call it, it really, it has never worked well. And I think finding a place where you could do what people want to be able to do and are trying to do right now in Keesey Square, you could find better places for that to be able to be done, probably just a block away in the park blocks. And you could invest some effort in trying to create, I think, what people want in that area, and it would be much more appropriate, it would be much more accessible, and it would be much more, I think, effective to do it there. But we keep trying to wrestle with this corner because we keep trying to make it something that it's really not designed to be and doesn't work well as. It's got big walls, it's closed in, it's hard to work with, but it's the only space people can think of. And so I say, rather than keep trying to take something that doesn't really work and keep trying to, you know, try to work, rework it to make it work, is let's find a place where actually we can do what people want to be able to do and do it in a place that is much more appropriate. And then we could take Keesey Square and do something else with it that is more appropriate to that square. So I'm not trying to shut down free speech or the right of assembly. I'm saying let's have free speech and assembly in a more appropriate area that is much more effective and works much better, a block away in the park blocks, and then you can do something with Keesey Square that's more appropriate for what it is. I mean, that would be my long-term goal. That, I don't know how that really helps the issue you're talking about now, but in terms of voting for the measure, I think I will because the consistency is probably the appealing piece for me. But I would long-term like to find a better solution.
Alan?
Can you cut through or pass through a park when it's closed from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. en route to another place?
Yes, you can.
You can, okay. So same would hold true for Keesey Square if you were going to cut through it on a way to a different place, like cutting kitty corners through it, that would be permissible?
Yes, it would.
The way Mike posed the motion is that to bring back more information about turning it into a park, which I'm interested in having further conversation about turning Keesey Square into a park and treating it like any other park, which is why I brought it up last time, and I still think that's a good idea to explore, especially since only, what, 200 feet away is a park in the park blocks, which is treated differently. So I'll support the motion to bring back and have that conversation tomorrow. As a recent puppy owner and having the puppy razor shards to prove it, I'm very concerned about unvaccinated dogs and with regard to my dogs, but also to people. So I think that's a very important public health issue that we need to deal with. But I'm not sure what licensed dog provision here does that, if it's already illegal to have an unlicensed dog, what does this do differently?
I think the most significant piece is, right now, there's a five-day grace period. So if you move to town, you have five days to license your dog. And what we're suggesting is that if the rule is changed to say, "A dog that comes into the downtown must be licensed," then we're sure that dogs that are coming into crowded environments have those rabies vaccines. So they don't, they can't walk around downtown for five days with an unvaccinated dog. We would need to know if a dog's downtown in a crowded environment, it's been vaccinated, has a license.
But they could in other parts of the city?
Yes. Because we're not saying, well, you would have, the grace period would still apply every place else.
So really what this is about is taking away the grace period. So given what you said, Lieutenant Klinko, about we wouldn't arrest people and impound their dogs, what's the sanction if the grace period's gone?
Well, I'm not saying you wouldn't. I'm saying it would be a last resort.
So I think primarily what we're thinking about here is downtown is our most congested pedestrian area in the entire city, and it is a place above all else or all others that we are trying to make safe and inviting. And so that why, why we would recommend that we add this extra layer of protection downtown.
So help me out here, what would we do if we came across some unlicensed dog in the downtown area?
Well, they could receive a citation, but then they could also be directed to take their animal outside the core, which is 6 to 11 and Lincoln to Pearl. So you could, you could get a warning, you could be told you need to license your dog, you could receive a citation immediately. And then if they refused to leave the area, then it would be a willful violation, and at that point, you could seize the animal, you could actually arrest the individual. It would all about, it'd be about sort of increasing the penalty depending upon the level of cooperation you were getting.
It's kind of, one of the first things we've talked about, though, is, I mean, the one thing, the first thing you could do is you could license your dog same day. You could go to the, we've been talking about where you would do that, if it's the downtown police station or the permit and information center, that we would give people resources that say, "Here's where you can get your dog licensed." And I think it's especially important, when you look at the statistics, that only 40% of the 40,000 dogs that we estimate in Eugene are licensed. So we know a lot of people in Eugene are coming downtown with dogs, that we have no certainty have that. So it would be an opportunity to say, "Hey, you need to get your dog licensed if you're going to be downtown, or you need to leave downtown." And I would think that somebody would have to be really pushing that to get into a citation moment.
Is it possible that the rules could be such that you would give them, have them have a one-day grace period as opposed to a five-day grace period?
We'll talk about that.
Okay. So, and so what are you asking? There's not a motion here on dogs.
No, there's not a motion on either. We're actually just wanted to, based on the public hearing, have an opportunity to talk more in detail about, learn the issues, and then we can come back with either another work session or action.
And by the way, what is the fine for an unlicensed dog?
Currently, it's $125 under current ordinance.
And what does it cost to license a dog?
$18.
$18.
$18.
$18. $18. But there is a program called the pro bono program, which helps people who are struggling with means to be able to get their animals licensed.
Right, right. Yeah, Mike does that, so very aware of that. Okay, thanks.
So I've got George Polling and George, and Greg Evans in the queue, and then I have a couple comments, and we just need to wrap it up for today.
Just real quick, first go around, I was still thinking that when you said we're going around the table, that it was just general comments, not directly to Mike's, Mike's motion. But I am interested in carrying on the conversation about making it a park. You know, I'm not ready to decide right now to do that. I'd like to see some more comparisons between what happens if it's a park or if we just decide to close it, the hours of the plaza down, such as Portland does it in Pioneer Courthouse Square. So there, that's closed, so I would just like to see some more comparisons and have that conversation. So I will support Mike's motion. And as far as the Portland Lou's, unless the prices have come down, last quote I saw was $90,000 per Lou, so that's quite expensive.
Greg?
You know, and I'm on the same note as George. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, I think that we need to have a healthy discussion about this, what is the pros and cons of a park designation versus leaving it as what it is right now, and looking at other means to, you know, including enforcement to, you know, make sure that the space is safe for everybody who's using it. And, you know, I really like the Lou concept. I think that, you know, I've had a chance, I know Claire and I have had a chance to go to Portland and see the Lou's in action and...
Post hands?
Don't go any further.
Yeah, and I think, I think that it's, you know, we have to provide someplace for people to go to the bathroom, that it's going to be a place that will not be able to be destroyed by, you know, some rogue elements who just want to have fun or whatever they want to do to destroy the toilet facility. But the Lou actually is a lot more sturdy and has the ability and the capacity to, in my mind, pay for itself over time if, you know, people are using it and, you know, we don't have to deal with porta-potties and that kind of thing.
So... Mayor? Yes.
Just very quickly, to Councilor Evans' comments, I agree with him about the Portland Lou. I didn't actually see it in action. I saw a maintenance worker working on it and asked him about their durability, so just wanted to clarify.
We're so grateful.
He saw different things.
So my only thought about this is, and I don't know if we can fix it or not, but my feeling is that there are people who view these proposals as punitive as opposed to trying to make something better, safer, and more usable. And somehow, between us all, we can have a more, a conversation about what we're trying to have happen to make this a good place for everybody as opposed to having people feel like we're creating some other exclusion situation. So I just ask us all to really think about that hard in terms of how we talk about it and how we try to move to any conclusions, that we do it in a way that is in line with our goals of being in a welcoming community for everyone and not singling any particular group out, that this is something that we're trying to do for all of us, to create a better city. So however we can manage that between us, I think it's all better for the community. So I think we're going to move that motion on the table, and you want to repeat it again, Mike?
Move to direct the manager to bring back to council action items sufficient to designate Broadway and Willamette as a public, a city park.
Keesey Square.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five in favor, in opposition, one, two. Councilor Soret?
No, I vote no.
Okay, it's five to three, it passes. So that's, we'll pick this up at a later meeting. Thank you.
Hey, Sarah, could you also bring back what changes?